I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for a special meeting on Wednesday, August 3rd, 2016. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Carmichael?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bartel?
Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have you all standing, please. If you're going to give any testimony tonight, either for or against any item, you've got to be sworn in. So if you'd please raise your right hand. Nobody's going to talk?
We're going to talk.
It won't hurt. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me guide.
I do.
Thank you.
Silence.
Yes, I would ask that any and all electronic devices be silenced. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the June 15 meeting. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the minutes as presented are adopted. Old business, planning and zoning, item 16011, the HARP Group regarding the property located at 3500 Midwest Road for the following. This is, we don't have to read all that down. Okay. This was continued to this evening. We are in open meeting. I have been alerted that the petitioner wishes to extend and postpone this to the August 17th, which will be a Wednesday. May I have a motion? Motion to, uh...
Continue?
Continue to August 17th.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. A question on the motion?
Just a point of clarification. This was publicly noticed in the newspaper, notice to surrounding property owners. Public hearing was continued, although there will be an agenda posted for this item for the August 17th minute. There will, there's no legal need to republish in the newspaper and resend notice to surrounding property owners. But we do have contacts for the property owners and the attorneys, and they are aware of the new date.
Okay. Very fine. Next item, new business.
Hold on.
We need to vote.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself. Please have a roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the item is postponed until our August 17 meeting. Under new business, planning and zoning, item 16019, Peak Custom Homes LLC regarding the properties located at 224-226 West Burlington Avenue, Westmont for the following. Item A, a zoning code variance request for relief from the minimum square feet per building in the R5 general residence district. Item B, zoning code variance request for relief from the minimum allowable density in the R5 general residence district. Item C, site and landscaping plan approval to build two new single-family semi-detached dwellings. The petitioner, if you would please sign in and announce your name.
I'm Demetrius Panos, and this is Tim Damas, and we're with Peak Custom Homes. We're proposing to build a two-unit townhomes at 224 and 226 Burlington, just right across the street. Now, we currently aren't the owners of the property, but we are under contract and contingent upon us getting these variances. We would go ahead and we would purchase the property and develop this project that we A couple of findings of fact that we submitted based on this project is the property that's located at 224 and 226 Burlington is currently zoned as an R5. Any multifamily project that would be built on this project would not satisfy the allowable density requirements. Without this variance, new multifamily construction on this project is not feasible. Also, given the current state of the structure on the property, we feel that this project would substantially improve the site. In addition, another finding of fact that we found is the current density requirements are pretty old, I guess. Joe has told us that they're over 100 years old. And then also, another finding of fact, in the general vicinity, there are similar projects in which variances have been requested and have been approved, and there are multifamily buildings that have been built in the general vicinity of the location of the proposed project. So we received comments back, I believe, on Thursday, and we have updated our drawings, our architectural, the landscaping plan and the site plan based on some of those comments. These are still preliminary, but I think I sent them to Joe this afternoon. He said he was going to print them out and send them to you. So we've taken the comments into consideration. You know, is there any questions?
We'll have questions. Okay, may I have staff, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting two variances in order to build the attached single-family product. The comprehensive plan recommends the type of residence that is proposed tonight. Our engineering division feels that the project can move forward to meet DuPage County engineering requirements. The revised landscaping plan and site plans have been distributed to the commission. Some of the changes include the building being moved back, being moved back on the site nine feet. The air conditioning units have decreased. The driveway is a little bit less deep. Three trees have been added to the site, and they've identified more of the landscaping requirements. There are still additional landscaping requirements that will need to be met, but they would meet the intention of what we've asked for at this point. And we would further recommend that the architecture in the front be broken up a little bit with some more undulation, similar to some of the attached product that you can see further west on Burlington. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public who will comment on this issue?
I don't know.
Hold on.
I need to speak.
Okay, please stand and be sworn in. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me guide. Okay, please approach a podium, speak into the microphone, and sign in.
I recently purchased the house at 222 West Burlington. I used to live at 18 South Hudson. I bought that as a foreclosure, fixed it up, and sold it. And it is an eyesore. You know, I'm a Bears fan. I have Bears season tickets. I like the color, but it is an eyesore. My question is, you said there was going to be a two-story? And I know the lots over there are very small compared to where I used to live. My main concern is how, if it's going to be two stories, it's a very small lot. And that's just kind of my concern. I mean, what's the timetable on this, and how long would it take?
As long as there's no, with weather permitting.
If, sir, if you could speak into the microphone?
As long as weather permitting and permits permitting, this is a pretty simple, as you can see, it's almost box. It's a pretty simple layout, and this should be done in easy six months.
And, you know, based on permitting and, you know, the zoning variance requests, we anticipate on hopefully starting construction in the late fall and being completed with construction in the late spring, early summer to hit the market.
Okay. Mr. Copel, just for your information, our plans show a six-foot-four-inch setback sidewall from the property line.
Okay, okay.
Which still, I believe that meets our code, correct?
Yes, there are no setback variances requested.
All right, just for the record, I am, there's, I'm putting a six-foot fence on the west side, just letting you guys know.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, let's...
I think go Bears.
Go look at that house. To be any further, public comment? Seeing no hands raised, we'll close the public comment. We'll start with Commissioner Carmichael.
Sir, I see you've, you, your revised plan, you've gone from four air conditioners to two. I'm curious about that.
Our architect usually is specific with custom homes. He's not, he's not familiar with the smaller type of units. He's always used to putting two. Basically, the air conditioners and the condensers work on the fact of how much square footage it is mechanically speaking, and the two units is not necessary because of the fact that you can put a three-and-a-half or front four-ton unit with a damper system. A damper system is like a furnace working as two systems for the square footage. So if we were to stay within this square footage, it would just be a real large condenser, nothing small, like, it would be like two little two tons instead of, so we have basically a three-and-a-half-ton larger one instead of two little ones. Two little ones would be more of an eyesore, since it's sitting over there. We want to clean it up a little bit as well.
I spoke with one of the neighbors today, and he was concerned about noise from the air conditioners. What, with these larger units?
These larger units will produce more force on the inside of the house, but it will be less operating because of the fact they are larger. If you go around the town and you see these smaller units with this type of 90-degree heat, they're constantly on because they're constantly need to force, bring the air in and move in. The larger units shut down because they force it, they, they cool it quickly, then it shuts down.
I've heard that. Thank you.
That's it. Commissioner Van Buren?
One of the reasons you feel that you might be eligible for this variance is that you're comparing yourself to the beautiful homes a little further west. Is that, is that the way, that right?
Those, those, yes, those were done, but those were done more Chicago-style row houses where you have to go three flights. As, and we have also a background in real estate, and we've noticed, I've built other duplexes in Westmont, and we notice a two-level, simple style of like a home is much feasible and more wanted than, more, sorry, more desirable than the ones that you have to basically walk in, go up to the second level, go up to the third level, and then hit a bedroom on the fourth.
Okay. But yours is a, it doesn't seem to be a whole lot of imagination on the front of that. And I know that you had asked him to submit a different front facade, or was it on the west facade that you were concerned about?
We thought that more undulation on the front facade would be a good idea.
I took that into consideration and spoke with the architect today, and we do feel that, yes, it's, we, we want...
But we don't see it.
Yeah, but we, it was just brought up today. So the architect is actually out of town as well. But we feel that right over here, at least one of these units where I'm pointing, we would change it and put like a gable, we will change it. We do agree that it, it shows uniqueness in each unit, but yes, that's a great idea, and we are, we're taking that definitely into consideration. And we, the simplest way to do it is change one of the units, pitch it like a gable.
One option in that regard, since you haven't seen the plans, is to, you have the option to vote on this, allow this proceed up to the village board, have the architecture refined between now and then. If staff and/or the village board is not comfortable that it's refined to the level that we're looking for, it can always be sent back down to you for a continued, new public hearing. It actually wouldn't even be, it would just be for the site plan review, and you can talk to the applicant again about that issue.
But we could also vote to postpone this until our next schedule.
Yes, you could. That's the other option.
Excuse me. Postponing it will, we understand this is a variance, not more of a site, like, issue of design and whatnot. We are 100% understanding of the design. If you look at my other work, there are different, and there are many differences, and we are 100% in agreement on this. And we don't just build anything to throw up, and we've got many compliments with many inspectors in many different villages, how, let's use the word OCD, we are when it comes to this. But in my opinion, delaying this project because of the look of it has really no merit on variance. But yes, absolutely, you can hold us to the architectural aspect later on, but yes, I agree, it should be changed.
It's up for site plan approval. So the site plan includes not only the footprint of the building, which is pretty generic, it also includes the architectural elements and making sure it fits within the neighborhood. And so this commission is, it's within their purview to look at those architectural elements.
Okay. You know, just one thing with the continuation, we're under contract, and the current owner of the property wants this to kind of get done as soon as possible. So hopefully, if we can get the variance request, we could close on the property in August and take over the property. Now, I know the current owners have had some violations in not maintaining the current property. Actually, they had a very difficult time mowing the grass, and we actually stepped in, not being the current owners, and actually mowed the grass for them because we want this project. A continuation could kill the deal, so we just wanted to bring that up.
I had one other question for you, Jill. There was, seemed to be a distinction between semi-detached, single-family and attached, single-family, in that the desirable building at this location would be a single-family attached, was that, was that the, what, did I read that right?
Right, from the comprehensive plan.
And it would more likely be for commuters rather than larger families, is the idea in this area where you...
Right, right, yeah. I mean, based on the size of the yard, it would be unlikely to see...
That's all I have.
For the variances without the site plan.
We're having a discussion here, just give us a second.
But this may not even get to the floor. It's by the time we would have our...
Oh, you mean continue since, I'm sorry, this month.
Okay, I'm having a discussion with the attorney. I'm getting the idea that your contingency on your purchases, you've got a time limit on you. One of the things that I've discussed with the attorney is, we could go through with the, recommend either up or down on the two variances and postpone the site plan until the August 17th where we have a scheduled meeting. Would you be able to turn around architecturals so we would be able to peruse them? Because if we were to recommend approval of the two variances, that would satisfy your contractual obligations, you could close on your contract.
Correct.
Or wait until the end of the month.
Yes. Okay, I'm jumping ahead, and I apologize. Commissioner Pill, let's go.
Okay, thank you. Guys, do you have any renderings on what the, this building will look like? Do you have any color drawings and things like that, that your architect has done?
We have not yet. We do have elevations and floor plans, but we don't have like a 3D rendering.
Those were in our packet, too.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, we get color submissions with the front and what the sides are going to look like, and some of the detail and things like that. How about of, you mentioned many former projects, so you've done other projects in our village and surrounding villages?
Yes, 219 and 217 West Quincy.
Okay. Are those the, the huge steps going up?
No, I do not believe in those, no.
Past that.
The, the, the style is, is, looks like a standard residence, but attached.
And do you have any photos of that or computer, nothing?
I have, I have on my phone. That'll help.
You actually have it?
Yeah. Can I turn my phone on or?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. I think I took a picture, yeah. Let me, it would be a similar elevation. As you can see from our elevations, the front's going to be, the front's going to be a brick facade with spots of stone, and then also in the entrance would be a stone entrance.
So, I guess, when I first looked at this and I said, oh, okay, I could pretty much go along with this, and then when I drove out and took a look at the site, I said, well, this is definitely going to be an improvement in the area. I think a strong wind would even do an improvement in the area. But anyway, going down two blocks further west, I saw what I considered to be the standard that I'd like to see along Burlington. And I think that based on the number of for-sale signs, we're going to see a lot of that. So using your own words, this is simple and box-like. You just said that a few minutes ago. That's not what I'm interested in seeing here. So if, well, you, you've understood from the comments earlier and from the comments this afternoon that that's not what we like, but that still was the comment you made 15 minutes ago. So I think what we want to see is something that reflects much more of what we have up the street. I don't want to lower the standard for the next five, over the next whatever number of years there are. I want to keep the standard where it's at with that one. I think the landscaping plan is the basic bare minimum, and I think the front of the facade is the basic bare minimum. I think you've somewhat agreed with that in the last few minutes also. So I want to see that, you know, I have no problem with variances for a project that's going to go ahead and be something that's going to be eye-catching and that's going to have curb appeal. Think about the thousands of people who drive by here on trains every day, looking out the window and things like that. I want it to look nice. And I want the next several to say, oh, we've got two beautiful examples, this is what we want for this area. So in order for me to support this project, I'd like to see an increased and heavier landscaping plan, and I'd like to see facade renderings that show some detail, some architectural elements, some curves, some jutting in and out, some bay windows. I'm not saying all these things, but something to, to give it more than just a flat front approach.
The other ones that you suggest, when you drive down the block and you see, those were built eight years ago during the collapse. One of the issues, and it's the issue in every town, is building for your price range. Those, most of those houses were given away, short sale or foreclosure, just like Sheamus' is down that block. Yes, those were beautiful, those were great, they have stone, but the problem was, no one was going to spend $650,000 for a duplex like that.
Agreed. I agree. On the other hand, you haven't bought the property yet, so you have nothing to lose. And think of the money you've saved by reducing the air conditioners from two to one.
It's not that simple.
I'm kidding. I'm sorry, I'd like to see a little nicer facility.
I agree. As, as, as the other gentleman stated, we, we do want to make it different from the other unit, to make it unique. But there's, to a certain extent, if we pour 100 more thousand dollars into it, and then they go and try to sell for an amount that people won't purchase it, then we're in the same situation as we were on those, and we are also, both of us are realtors as well, so we know the market very well. And most of the duplexes basically went underwater.
Well, I certainly can agree that you don't want to go underwater. You don't want to lose any money. I'm not certainly a proponent of that either. All I'm saying is, and I don't believe it's 100,000 dollars to make that kind of a difference, and it's also divisible by two when you finally get to the number. But I just think that what we want to see, I shouldn't say we, what I want to see as a commissioner, and I've been doing this for 12 years, so I've listened and watched a lot of projects, I want to see something that is closer to what we have than lowering the standard. I'll leave it at that. And that could be through landscaping and front, brickwork, stonework, bay windows, porches, balconies. Again, not all of those things, but a couple. There's none of them right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I'm, understand your predicament, but, you know, then again, no one's forcing anybody to buy anything, but you, but you have to, you have to make some money, and, and, and I understand that. I also would like to have, I don't need a carbon copy of those down, down the block further west.
310 West Burlington.
I don't, I don't need, need that. I, I need something more than, than what we're presented here. I think it's kind of plain. I would like to see something, since your architect, or, 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 he's out of town anyway, and it was just today, mentioned to him about something more or some changes or whatever. I'd like to give him a chance to, and I'm open to passing the other variances, and then the one possibility was send it up to the trustees and let them decide on that, whether they like it or not, or maybe bring it to the 17th, like, like that was said, that doesn't delay you the month, that keeps, keeps you in the ballpark, you know, and gives you a shot at making changes. It's going to be an improvement. Is it enough improvement, improvement over what's there? That's up to the votes. But I'm open to other suggestions, but I'd like to see it go forward. That's all I got.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to spend too much time echoing what's already been said, especially by Commissioner Pill. I agree with Commissioner Pill on the facades. Being an architect myself, like, I, I look at these plans and I see visions for what I would do to make it better, but I think the bottom line is like, we, we all recognize that it's just a rectangle, and I think simple undulation and plan and adding some gables and masonry detail, and by detail, I don't just mean spats of, of veneer stone, but like, if you compare it to these other precedents that we're talking about, there's real detail there, and, and I don't think it costs much money to, to put detail and a little bit of masonry. And, and I commit, you know, the variances, I'm fine with. I do want to hold off on voting on the light, site plan approval, hopefully until just the 17th. Do not hang you guys up too long. That's it.
I also echo my fellow commissioners' sentiments about the plain vanilla look of it. Are you familiar with the townhomes semi-detached, what you want to build between Dallas and Des Moines, west side of Casser?
They're, yeah, they just have some coming forward and some behind, and then...
Yeah, but the front also looks a little better than what's being presented here.
This is also black and white. A rendering will actually make things look much better.
I understand, and for my fellow commissioners, part of our job, why we're here, is to recommend approval of a site plan. So I don't feel comfortable pushing off what we should be doing to the village board. Attorney tells me that I'm on fairly okay ground by seeking approval of the two variances so the gentleman could close their contract, and if it's the commission's will, we could push a site plan approval back to the 17th where we have a scheduled meeting without anybody encourage anything, and that will give you two weeks to get us what we request. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Yes.
Okay. Since we're proceeding, any further questions then?
Just depending on the architect being in town and being able to turn this around and...
He'll be in town, he'll be back in town Friday morning.
So that should give us, okay.
Oh, I do have one more question.
Please.
I forgot, and this is just, almost just curiosity, but the, the two units versus the one unit, is that pretty standard? You guys do that often? One unit for a duplex? One unit for a duplex? One, sorry, HVAC unit, condenser?
Yes, it's just a larger condenser, that's all, of the furnace. As, as I did in 219 West Quincy, that, that project is a 2,300-square-foot project, it has a 3.5-ton condenser with one furnace, and there is a system, like I said, it's a damper, so it works upstairs and downstairs, works simultaneously, and to this day, it, as of 100 degrees, the house still reaches 70 degrees if it's 100 degrees out there.
So, it's just like joint maintenance plan, because it's co-owned, is that the deal?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I thought they were talking about one giant-
One AC per unit, one AC per unit.
Sorry, yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking you were discussing one for both units, which seemed-
The old one just- It was per unit, they had them like zoned.
All right, I'm good, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, since we're requesting a variance, maybe we have a reading of findings of fact via, we have two variances, one finding of fact will apply to both variances. So, if we may have a reading, please?
Peak Custom Homes regarding 224 and 226 West Burlington Avenue in Westmont. Request for variances to allow relief from the minimum square foot per building in the R5 General Residence District, and relief from the maximum allowable density in the R5 General Residence District. Criteria one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Given the property acquisition and development costs, the variances sought are required if the applicant is to yield a reasonable return on its investment. Three-bedroom units are required to meet market demand but cannot be built without these variances. Criteria two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Individual development on the individual small lots is highly unlikely, and development as proposed represents the highest and best use for these properties. Criteria three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. A similar successful development exists in close proximity on Burlington Street. The proposed development is an appropriate transitional use between the rail line to the south, the central business district to the east, and single-family homes to the north, and the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive use plan. As such, this proposed development will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement, therefore, the findings of fact for variance are hereby adopted and approved. Under Planning and Zoning Item 16019, Peak Custom Homes, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item A, a zoning code variance request for relief from the minimum square feet per building in ER5 General Residence District. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item B, zoning code variance request for relief from the maximum allowable density in ER5 General Residence District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. A question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to, to own Item C, site and landscaping plan approval to build new, two new single-family detached dwellings to August 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carmichael?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for the variances, and it's up to the village board to approve them or not, but you have our recommendation, and that we look to see you on the 17th.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
And thank you for filling in our transit-oriented, what is it again?
Development.
Development. It, I can't wait to see more people downtown Westmont.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Staff, any questions, comments?
No, at this time, Mr. Chair.
Chair, Commissioners, any questions?
Sir, our next meeting is on the 17th.
10th.
10th.
Yes.
That's the regularly scheduled meeting.
And that will be BMW on the 10th.
And the Westmont Village Apartments.
I'm sorry.
Westmont Village Apartments and BMW, next week.
Oh, that's right, we have two items, I'm sorry. I'm getting old.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.